Let me know when y'all ready. God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior and Savior. We praise God, we bless God for another day, another week, another month, that He will bless us, smile on us, and certainly always say, "God, our good, He's good all the time, and all the time, God is a mighty good God." Certainly, I want to greet each one of you in the marvelous, majestic name of Him who does things well, to all of our New Hopeians, to all of our friends and families that shares with us each time during this week, and certainly, we are grateful to each one of you. Certainly, I want you to take a moment out, just call, or text, inbox, a friend, a church member, and let them know that this weekly ministry here at the New Hope Number One Baptist Church is on, and will do them good, not only today, but in the days to come. Certainly, our prayers goes out to each one of you, certainly, we thank God for you. Certainly, if you ever in our city, our area, visitors, please come, come by here, do your good to come by, by the hope, certainly, you won't leave the same way you came. So if you're ever in Thomasville, Clark County, Marengo County, Will Clark, Monroe County, Choctaw County, you just want to just come and worship with us each Lord's Day. Certainly, I just want to remind us, since we end this revival season in August, and certainly, getting ready for, praying for our revival, the fourth week in August this month, and certainly, morning worship, homecoming, and so revival Monday through Wednesday, the 28th through the 36th, there they all got a great preacher coming back in the person, Pastor Quinn Hammond from Antioch Baptist Church in Bremenham. Whoa, what a great, great preacher. Give you more information later on during this month, as we prepare, praying for a revival, and certainly, those who tune with it, make y'all to come. Make it a week, weekend, a week of vacation, and just be revived here at the New Hope Church. Let us pray, gracious God, our Father, we come today, we come thanking you for another day, another week, that you'll bless us, another week that you smile on us, and certainly, we are indebted to you. And God, as we come, just as we are empties pitcher before full fountain, we come, oh God, stretching our hands to thee, because there's no other help we know but you. Oh Lord, look on us today with our pity, look on us with our mercy, compassion. As we yield our year, we are to yours. Continue, God, to have thy way with us, continue to mold us, continue to shape us, and who and what you will have us to be. God, I'm praying for mankind everywhere, those who's going through season of sickness, those who in the hospice, who's at home, those who in convalescing facilities, and dear God, praying that you just stretch forth with your healing hands, touch all manners of sickness, all manners of disease, God, heal those that going to mental, spiritually issues, sickness, God, thank you for the shedding of your blood through your son, Jesus, because we reminded that he was wounded for our transgression, he was bruised for our iniquity, the chastisement of our peace was upon him, and by his stripe, thank you for the stripes, God, that can heal us from all manners of spiritual sickness and disease. God, I'm praying now, those who behind jail and prison walls, God, touch them right now, touch their hearts and their spirits. God, I'm praying for those who on the battlefield, those who are defending our country, and dear God, we praying, God, that you would give them the strength, give them the patience, give them intelligence, and dear God, to do your will and not ours. Bless, I pray, God, for our church family, praying for the body of Christ. Continue to bless each member of the church, and God, praying for the steadfastness, and praying, God, for the boldness of those who on, on the battlefield for, for the you, oh Lord. Bless us now, continue to hold us in these unchanging, these prayerless time that we find ourselves living within. Lord, I'm praying for, I'm just praying for those who are less fortunate, I'm just praying, God, for those who within our spirit, you know them, God, you know them name by name, you know them our condition, just stretch forth with your hands right now. And God, we are thankful, we are grateful, dear God, that, that you can do all things through him that strengthen us, continue to strengthen us, where we weak, continue to build ourselves where we spiritually torn down. Oh, thank you for all things, we ask all these blessings. And your son, Jesus, come now in the person of the Holy Spirit, touch our spiritual ears, that we can be able to hear our eyes, we can see our hearts, that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now, you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer, and all the children of God said, amen. All right, let's get right into our study and our discussion on today, this week, as we start a series dealing with our gift, we're dealing with special revival theme, our rise up, and revive God's gift. And so, been focusing out of 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 6, and so, I want, I want to deal with, guess for the next several weeks, and as the spirit leaders, as dealing with the gift, and then, we're gonna explore the gifts, dealing with gift, the gift, G-I-F-T, and then, we want to explore the gifts that the gift gives. The gift that the Holy Spirit gives is the holder, that God gives is in the person of the Holy Spirit. But then, the Holy Spirit gives gifts, and so, so, so we want, we want to look at stirring up, rekindle, or reviving, making alive the gift that is within each believer. So in 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 6, I'm gonna read the three different translation, and I want you to choose which one that you, that kind of, you can kind of identify with. So the New King James Translation says in 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verses number 6, he says, "Therefore, I remind you to stir up," okay, "stir up the gift," that's G-I-F-T, not gifts, but gift, "of God, which is in you, through the land of my hands." Now, that's New King James Translation. Now, the revised standard of that version of that same verse says this, 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 6, he said, "Hence I remind you to rekindle," okay, look at that word, rekindle, it's the same as the word stir, but it just using a different word, all got the same meaning. Rekindle the gift of God that is within you through the land, land of my hands. This is what Paul is reminding his son, Timothy, in the ministry, is that Paul laid hands on him, and so, Paul is encouraging Timothy to stir, to rekindle. Okay, now, I like how this English standard or the version of the Bible reads, and this is what it says, he said, "For this reason, I remind you to fan," okay, "to fan and to flame the gift of God, which is in you through the land of my hands." Okay, I think we all can, 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 can identify with those three words, stir, rekindle, fan. Those of us that know anything about building a fire, that generation that came up, making a fire, you know, to keep warm, or to burn things, those who barbecue, we know how it is, that sometime, in order to, you don't have to necessarily add in the wood, or in the charcoal, as long as you's got a little smoke there, and you don't have to add anything, but sometime, you have to stir, you have to shake up the coals of the wood that is up underneath, the, the, up underneath that, and so, you have to shake it up, you have to stir it up, you have to move it around. Don't necessarily mean you have to add any wood or in the charcoal, but you have to stir it up, you have to shake it up, and once a little air, once a little air hits it, is that it, it initiate, it causes it to rekindle, causes to, to blaze again, and so, so, so this, this is what Paul was encouraging Timothy in the ministry, is to, to, to agitate, to disturb, that word stir, to rekindle, to move, to shift, okay? To, to act, to activate, in other words, is that we need to restore the flame, okay? And so, so this, this is, this is what, this is what Paul was exalting Timothy, and I believe he's speaking to us as a church, as, as, as present day believers and followers, is to wake up, may want to use that word, may want to write that word down, to stir up, to rekindle, to fan the flame, is to wake up, to disturb, to agitate. The gift that is within him, that is within us, and so, and so, I want, I want you, I want you to walk with us as we, as we deal with this, because when Paul is talking about the gift, is that he's, he's, he's talking about the gift of the Holy Spirit, or the Holy Ghost. Okay, that, that's, that's, that's what he's, that is what he's referring to when he talks about the gift, and Paul understood that it wasn't enough to just receive, to receive the gift, which is the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost, but the Holy Spirit must stay active. Are you listening to me? The Holy Spirit must stay active, the whole, this gift must stay stirred up. It's just like, it's just like dealing with natural fire, building a fire, dealing with grilling charcoal, is that if you want, if you, if you, if you want, if you don't want it to die, leave it alone, but if you want to keep the heat, to keep the flame, is that you got to stir it up. And so, and so, listen at what, and look at what Paul is telling Timothy, is that, is that it becomes his responsibility to keep the gift stirred up. It becomes our responsibility as believers to keep the gift stirred up, to keep the gift active, and keep in mind, I says, the Holy Spirit, the Holy Ghost. And so, and so, and so, there's a responsibility upon, on our part, that we must do, and because we are what, write this down, we are the keeper of the flame. Okay, we are the keeper, we, we are the keeper of the flame. And I want to say that every person that, 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 that comes into the acknowledgement and come into the receiving end, is that, is that, is that they must be reminded constantly, that we got to be reminded daily, is that the most important thing that can happen in our life, what is that, Pastor? I'm glad you asked, is that when we meet the Lord Jesus. That's the most important thing that can happen in our lives, is that when we come in contact with, with the Lord Jesus in a personal way, and we, and, and when we meet him, we got to believe that he gonna forgive us of our sins, and that we become a child of God. When we meet him, is that we got to be convinced that we are new creatures in Christ Jesus. I think that's the most important thing, and the most important reality that can happen in any person's life, is when he or she comes into the realization without any doubt, without any questions, that they have been born again. That's, that, that's, that's, that's when reality sits in, it ain't got nothing to do with how many Bibles we may have, how many scriptures we may be able to quote, but the most important thing that can happen in our life, is that when we know beyond a shadow of doubt that we are a new creature in Christ Jesus. I want y'all to get that. That's, that's one thing that you must know. You got to know. Got nothing to do with what church you belongs to. Being a good person, being a decent person, that's not the most single important thing that can happen in your life, that, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not important. But what is more important, and I'm gonna move on when I say this, is that what Jesus told Nicodemus in that third chapter of St. John. What did he say? "Except you be born again." You cannot see the kingdom of God, and secondly, you can't even enter into the kingdom of God. So let's get a good understanding of that, is that we got to be born, we must know that. And once we have been born again, is that we become a new creature, we become a new creation in Christ Jesus. And then, the second most important thing that can, that ought to happen in our lives, is that we've become baptized with the Holy Spirit. The first, most important thing is that we know that we are in Christ, we are new creatures. You remember what John the Baptist says, to, came on the scene, when some of the disciples came, some of his own disciples came, and, and, and said, "No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the one, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not the Messiah, there's one that is coming after me, I baptized you with water." But the one that is coming after me is gonna baptize you with what? Gonna baptize you with the Holy Spirit. Gonna baptize you with the Holy Ghost, I baptized you with water, John said, "I baptized you with water of repentance." But the one that I'm referring to, whose shoes I'm not worried to scoop, stoop down to, in loose, to loose, he's gonna baptize you with the Holy Spirit, with the Holy Ghost, and with fire. And you go over to that first chapter of Book of Acts, Jesus tells his disciples in that, no, I think in that second chapter of Acts, he said, "You gonna receive," no, no, in the first chapter, he says, "Go into Jerusalem and, and, and wait there," and, no, "Go into Galilee," I'm sorry, "but go into Galilee and wait there until you've been endured with power." Don't leave Jerusalem until you have received power, the Holy Ghost, and that oak fire. And that's when Jesus says, "And you shall receive the power, but after that, the Holy Ghost come upon you, and you shall be my witnesses, both in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and to the other parts of the world." We're talking about this gift. And when you read in the Book of Acts, it's that, "On the day of Pentecost was fully come, they was all in one place, with one, on one accord, and suddenly, there came a sound from heaven, as a mighty rushing wind, and clover's tongue like fire set upon them, and they was filled with the Holy Ghost, and began to speak in other tongues, as the Holy Spirit gave them other hands." They received, they was filled with the Holy Ghost. So you ask the question, "So Pastor, why is the Holy Ghost is so important? Why, why the Holy, the Holy Ghost came on the day of Pentecost like fire?" The Holy Ghost is the third person of the Godhead. The Holy Ghost represents that supernatural power that God's filled the human vessels with, so that they can be about kingdom work. We cannot do kingdom work effectively if we have not been filled. We cannot be effective witnesses. Oh yeah, you can go through the motion, a person can go through the motion, they can do kingdom things, work, they can go, that, that, you know, they can go through the motion, but they will not be effective. You can be, we, we can be more effective, we can, we can have, we, we can have more drawing, we, we can catch more fish with the Holy Ghost than without him. Go back to the modern prayer, in that modern prayer, in that sixth chapter of Matthew, when Jesus said, "Let thy kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." So we are representatives here on earth, we, we ought to advance the kingdom of God here on earth, and if, if, if others gonna become part of the kingdom, it gonna take us, if other is gonna be saved, it gonna take a witness. Look at the difference in these disciples after the Holy Ghost, after the day of Pentecost. Before, they were scared, they were cowards, they was running, they was in hiding. They was in darkness, they did not really understand what all Jesus was investing in, in departing into them. But after the day of Pentecost, they was changed men, had a spirit of boldness, and the record says, is that, is that, is that, even though they was looked at as for ignorant, but one thing the record reflected is that they, that these men have been with the Lord. And when you think of the, our foreparents and the, and the church of yesteryears, is that they may not have had a lot of education like you and I may have, but they had what they call mother with, they had power. We not have been able to read, understood what they were reading, but the Holy Spirit made the difference. They had power. And so, what the Holy, what the Holy Spirit, what this gift is, is that it equip us, may want to write this down, the Holy Spirit equip us to fulfill the great commission that Jesus said in that 28th chapter on Matthew, "Go ye therefore." Not only do I want you to preach, but I want you to teach, and after you get through teaching, I want you to, those that believe, I want you to baptize them. When you read, read Mark's Gospel, it said, "Preach and teach," and then, he, and he said, "Ye that believe," or you get to the 28th chapter on Matthew, then he talks about teach them, teach them what? "To observe all things." That's, you know, that, that, that's why we identify as ourselves as missionary Baptists, we don't, we don't really, we don't really do what we've been, what, what we profess, identify as ourselves doing, we don't do no missionary work, we don't go. Missionary is someone who go, we, we more stationary. But those of us who are followers of Christ, is that our mission is to go. We ought to carry out the ministry of Jesus. And you said, "Pastor, what it was the ministry of Jesus?" The ministries of Jesus consist of the seek and the save, that which was lost. Yeah. So when you go to that 10th chapter of Acts, verse 38, is that you ask the question, "How God anointed Jesus on Nazareth with the Holy Spirit?" It tells us that Jesus went about doing it because he was empowered by the Holy Spirit. These, these disciples was able to do this. And 1 John, chapter 3, verse 8, says, "For this prayer for the Son of God was manifested, that we may destroy the works of the devil." That was the works of Jesus, he came to destroy the works of the devil. And you keep reading that 1 John, chapter 4, verse 17, is that because, as he is talking about Jesus, so are we are in the world. So it goes back to what Paul was exalting, admonishing his son, Timothy, in the ministry, get the important, Paul, look, look at, look at the, the pattern, Paul said, "I laid my hands on you, I, I, I ordained you for this work of the ministry." When I laid my hands on you, is, is that, is that, is that not only was you being commissioned to go, but the Holy Spirit rested upon you. And that's what he says in that eight, in that sixth verse, to stir, to rekindle, you got, you got, you got the Holy Spirit, since you's a vessel, since the Holy Spirit is in you, is that you need to stir that gift up, keep it alive, keep it active. And listen at me, brothers and sisters, it does not matter how gifted you and I may be. how gifted you and I may be. It would profit us nothing, it would be useless if we don't fan it. If we don't rekindle, if we don't stir it up. What good of it is to uh, uh, to make a fire? And you, and you, and you want, you wanna stay warm. And you let that fire die out. And now then you need to stir it up, to rekindle. What good, what good, what good is it to have an automobile? Or, or you're listening to me? To have an automobile, I don't care how good, I don't care how much you spend on that automobile. I don't care how much horsepower, I don't care how strong that engine may be. But if that battery is dead, that car ain't no good. Okay, how much gas you put in there, I may have a tank full of gas. But if that battery is dead, what makes that car alive? And I know they're coming up with electric cars now. I don't care what kind of car it is, but if that battery is dead, might as well say that car is dead. So what, so, so I want, I wanna, want us to just, to think on these things, as far as the importance of this gift, the Holy Spirit being activated. Regardless of our dreams that we may have, don't care what our calling may be, unless we activate the Holy Spirit, we are dead. Cause what happened is that when we, when we activate, when we are activated, is that we have the tendency of activating others. When that, when that, when that gift is activated within us, is that it don't, it, it, it's just like a wildfire. I, I think it was just like uh, in the Old Testament, remember Samson? A- a- as strong as he was, one day he mess around there and, 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 and caught a hold to uh, 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 three hundred foxes. He was so swift, he tied them all up together, and, 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 and the Bible said, "He set them afire." And them foxes sit the whole city, the whole town on fire. And that's what the Holy Spirit does when he is activated. So let me just leave this with you, is that we need to examine our spiritual life and see where the Holy Spirit is being activated. And Exodus says, "Are we using the gift more today than we did on last week?" Just do a spiritual evaluation. Are we, are we using the gift more than we did last year, last ten years? And if we're not, is that what changes do we need to make? All right, God bless you and God keep you, we're gonna continue this, dealing with stirring up the gift. Lord, we thank you now that you choose us, that you saved us right in the nick of time. Continue dear God to give us a hunger and give us a thirst, give us a desire to God, to rekindle, to revive and to reactivate that which was in us. Bless us now, oh God, that we may be able to be blessings to others. We ask all these blessings in your son Jesus' name, amen.